I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, do we have a sign-in sheet? Okay. Usually we open it up to public comments. Is there anyone who's here that's not here about the pharmacy as a public comment unrelated? Or I suspect most people, that's why you're here. Okay. We will then dive into, if there's no regular public comments, we'll dive right into an update on the pharmacy. So. Oh, Pam?
Yes, hi, good afternoon. I just want to say that was a grueling meeting last night, and I hope that that doesn't occur again. It was rather inconvenient for people who hired attorneys and professionals and expensive. And honestly, that disturbed me very much. I do have a question regarding what occurred last night, and I guess it's directed to the town attorney. Because now, for the third time in two months, you've closed public hearings, pending additional information and submissions from the applicant or specific requests made by any board member. And I'm not understanding why that's permissible by law. If the applicant is able to submit additional information after a public hearing is closed, the public does not have access to that information and does not have an opportunity to comment on the information that is then received on that application. So I do believe this is a legal question. I don't expect an answer right now, but I would like that to be addressed. And then the other one question I do have, since you did, in fact, close the public hearing on the country club, is whether or not the town board is considering having a public hearing for the secret determination of significance, or that will just occur in a work session. Again, I am not expecting an answer to either one of these questions. And I thank you for your time.
Just to partially answer your first question. When we receive the information that we have held open for, we will post that on the town website. So that anyone who does want to pick it up and comment on it before we get to the cutoff date will have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, last night you did not set off cutoff dates for public comments on either one of those hearings.
October 20.
October 29 for...
October 20th for Grady Riley, but I don't think you said...
Yeah, I had a date specific for her space country.
Yeah, I thought it was October 29. Yeah, but I have to check my notes. We'll put that on the website. Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay, pharmacy. The star of the show, I think, for today. So as people have heard, the pharmacy is in the process of shutting... Oh, louder? Yeah, I will. I will protect better. So as people have heard, the pharmacy is going to stop filling prescriptions. The store itself will remain open. They will still continue to sell over-the-counter medications as well as the lunch counter will be open. But right now, the pharmacy is scheduled to be closed as of a week from today. I spoke this morning to someone higher up in the Soloviev group to see if we could get an extension on that closing. So this afternoon, that decision will hopefully be made, and they will get back to me. What we're going to do is we'll create a tab at the top of our town website page so that people can click on it. We'll create a pharmacy so that people will be able to click on it and get the latest updates as we get them. So that's what we're trying to work on immediately. The decision to close a pharmacy is one that I do not foresee that they will change their minds on. So the best that we can do at the moment is try and delay that closure and give us more time to react. What is going to happen is there was a letter that has gone out. I think it's been posted by the Shelter Island Reporter that talks about you can transfer your existing prescriptions to a pharmacy of your choice. If that doesn't happen, if you don't make that decision yourself, it will automatically get transferred over to the Southfold Pharmacy. So I've spoken to four different people, no, three different people at the Southfold Pharmacy to discuss that transition. And since they do use the same software, that transfer should be somewhat seamless. Of course, there's going to be hiccups and bumps in the road. Everyone should expect that. Just proceed with patience. One of the requests that the pharmacist over there did make is that if you have a prescription that's up for renewal in the next week or two, see if you can get that filled locally before they close next week so that it just gives the Southfold Pharmacy more time to transition into the extra workload. So that's where that piece that's related to the Shelter Island Pharmacy goes. From there, we've been working... I've got Kelly Rochu, who's the head of our senior services department, to... We've been working on what can we do to help seniors with mobility issues who can't get off island to pick up their prescriptions. So we're looking at a couple of different options. One is that we have a grant for the shopping assistance program. And we're wondering whether or not we can do something which is similar to what Conic Landing does with Southfold Pharmacy. And they have a system whereby you call in your prescriptions. And we have to work out the details. We also have to work out the insurance coverage. I've got to call into the insurance company to find out if we have drivers who actually go over and pick up prescriptions for people, how that would work and make sure we're covered. But what we're thinking is that people would call in prescriptions or the refills to the pharmacy. They have a setup where they'll have their credit cards on file so that they can pay for the prescriptions, do whatever sign-offs are necessary. And we would have a driver who would go over once a day, pick up those prescriptions, and then bring them back to Shelter Island. There's logbooks and chain of custody that we need to check into to make sure that we're... Like, we have this under control. Kelly's thinking through things that I haven't even thought of as to where medications and things will get stored while they're waiting to be picked up. For seniors who cannot get to the senior service, to the senior center to pick up those prescriptions, we would try and work with a driver to get those delivered to those who certainly cannot make it out. And then have a system where those who don't travel off of Shelter Island but are comfortable traveling on Shelter Island could come and pick up their prescriptions. So that's one option that we're looking into. I've also been in contact with Colonial Drugs. They also have Sag Harbor Pharmacy. They're in the same conglomerate. They are also looking into if people want to use their pharmacies, a driver, they're looking to extend either their hours and/or days, and they will actually deliver to people's homes. So where we might be able to have some grant-covered senior options with Southfold Pharmacy, the Colonial Drugs and Sag Harbor Pharmacy may be able to work with those who aren't seniors yet but would like to have their prescriptions delivered. So I have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow to talk about logistics and seeing how we can get that implemented. Their one ask for the town board is that if they institute this, is there an opportunity for us to cover the ferry charges? So that's something that we can try and figure out what the cost would be and where the funding for that could come from. So that's just something to... For the moment. I've also had reach-outs from online drug companies who are... Someone from Washington, DC. I think I had a chance to talk to them to see what their proposal is for getting coverage. What I'm thinking is that we'll just put together on the town website all of the different options as far as pharmacies go and what we've got tentatively scheduled for assistance for people. You know, online options as well. So that is where we are at the moment for short-term solutions and trying to figure out what we can do. I want to just talk about long-term for a minute because...
Before you go to long-term? On the short-term, these drug delivery options, do they cover Schedule I drugs?
That's what we're trying to find out. It's just... Yeah, that's a concern is whether you're talking opioids and some antibiotics and things. So yeah, that needs to be investigated further. And the pharmacies are looking at that. It may be easier for Colonial Drugs and Sag Harbor if their employees are keeping custody of the drugs, and so it's not turning it over to the senior center or turning it over to a driver from the senior center. So that may be like where... How people need to make decisions on which pharmacy that they ultimately go with. For a long-term solution, we are hoping to try and do something. In talking to the Soloviev group this morning, they are open to either selling the property or leasing the store to someone who wants to run a pharmacy. And there's a couple of pharmacies that I've talked to so far, they're not in a position right now to consider making that kind of purchase or lease. But is, you know, reach-out continues. And I've had a couple of people reach out to say, hey, we may have somebody interested. How do we get in contact? So that conversation will take place later today. And then Benjamin, you had a comment yesterday about potential health assistance with funding, finances.
Yeah, no, obviously, this is really hitting the heart of this community. And it affects everybody, not just seniors. It affects people with kids, absolutely everyone who lives here. And there are a lot of people who are upset, but there are also a lot of people who are willing to step up to help. So there certainly has been a great outpouring of offers of financial help if that is needed, if there's a gap that needs to be filled. And we will have to see. The biggest problem with the pharmacy is it probably loses about forty to fifty grand a month.
That was the number quoted to me.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's a big nut. So I'm not sure getting someone to come in to operate a business that has a $50,000 monthly deficit is a realistic expectation.
True, true, yes. I mean, part of the problem is, for an individual pharmacy, the economies of scale are not there, so they're not able to negotiate the best drug prices. And then there's something that I'm learning a little more than I want to know about the business, about clawbacks with insurance companies. So they may say, we're going to cover $100 of this prescription. You know, the individual's copay might be this. They might just cover the prescription cost. But then when it comes time for the reimbursement, they only get $80, so they've just lost $20 on that prescription. And when you multiply that, I don't know what the prescription volume is for the store, but...
You end up with fifty grand a month.
Exactly, it ends up quickly. And then also just trying to hire pharmacists. That's also been a big problem. It is just getting people to come out here. So that's part of it. So that's where we are. I'm glad to see people here. I would like to hear what your concerns are as we talk to the pharmacies and trying to figure out some of the transition period. If there's things that you think that we need to make sure we consider in those conversations, what works, what you're concerned about. I would love to hear that so that we take as much information from today into the meetings that we'll be having over the next few days.
Yeah, and just remember, we're all in this together, and we're going to work to try to solve this. I mean, I've lived with a chronic illness my whole life. So it affects me as it affects everybody else here. So we're going to hopefully figure something out.
And I just want to remind everybody that this is as difficult and painful for the employees at the pharmacy as it is for everybody else. So I know that it's scary and frustrating, but please don't take your upset and anger out on the employees and the staff at the pharmacy because they're just as devastated, and they're working hard to try to make it all work out. So have a little compassion for them.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Lisa said she's not usually in on Sunday, and when I went over there on Sunday to talk to her, she was like, I might as well be here. There's a million questions, so, yeah. So Janet, if you could come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Janet Jamato. I have a question and a comment. The question is, what happens to that space before... Well, if they make a decision or if they don't make a decision, does it just stay empty within the pharmacy?
You mean the actual back portion where the pharmacy is? I have not asked that question yet, whether or not they'll do any remodeling or if they're just going to keep that space empty and just run the rest of the over-the-counter meds, T-shirts, you know, jambus, et cetera.
And I'm sure you don't have an answer to this, but I'm wondering if this is indicative of a move to vacate the entire building. I mean, this is maybe, is this step one? And then step two is, building is emptied? And my concern about that, too, is that former Jax Marine is sitting empty. So now the promises that that group made, that they were going to be part of this community, have fallen flat because, you know, we have empty storefronts that certainly affect the look of town completely. As I said, nothing you can do about that, but maybe it's a warning to us as we move forward and other groups approach the town with regard to purchasing large pieces or individual pieces of property, businesses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Manas?
Molly Kendall. I'm nervous being here because I've only lived here for a little over four years, so I realize that I know nothing. Having said that, I also moved my entire family here because it's such a magical, lovely place to be. So the pharmacy hit hard. As someone who's not from here and hasn't grown up here, it's hard to find information, and it's hard to know who to ask and where to go. So Shelter Island Local and Shelter Island Neighborhood are a big source, but not completely reliable. And I found on town websites or notes, it's kind of hard to find stuff because I do want to be a helpful part of this community. I love Shelter Island, and I hate to see things like this. Before I moved here, I was an entrepreneur. And before I knew what properties were what, when I saw a whole bunch of vacant commercial properties, I was like, wow, there's so much opportunity here. I would love to be part of this. I'd love to build something. I'd love to do something to help the community. And then I realized that it's not just the Soloviev Jax Marina, but there's like multiple properties that are... It's okay to be vacant. It's a free country, so anyone can sell anyone, and anyone can do anything with that business. It just feels like for such a small place with limited opportunities to be part of this community, is there some way to think outside of the box to... Well, I think incentivize more than punish, but incentivize owners to lease a reasonable... You can't force people, but I'm just spitballing ideas for the long-term solution. And for the transparency of what's going on with the Soloviev, it would help when someone like me sees this situation. I'm first very upset that it's happening, but then it's like, well, what's the other side? Why are they doing this? There must be some large reason that we don't know. That group is not disclosing anything. They're not saying anything. But someone who wants to help find a solution, help be part of the solution, if it means trying to open a business and failing, but like, it would be helpful to know the reasons why from the source and not from the gossip, as much as we can know so that if you want to approach it solving, help solving the problem. It'd be helpful, like you said, there's going to be a tab on the town website. It's just hard to find good information to know where and how to help. Because as you said, it's not just seniors, even though they're a very cherished, large part of this community in an emergency. If your kid, if you and your kid needs medication, you don't want to be driving off island. Oh, and the last thing I was thinking of is part of the panic of relying on delivery service is delivery is very hard here to get anything. And I'm sure that's a very deep, longstanding, old subject. But I think if somehow that could get untangled, that...
You're talking about not the delivery service we're trying to set up through the senior service. You're talking about like Amazon and...
Yes, yes, Amazon FedEx, the mail, the two different post offices. And thank goodness for certain postal clerks who will hold your mail, even if it's at the wrong place. But like, then when you think, that's where my medication, that is the rabbit hole medication is going to go into, it's kind of terrifying, even if it's not that important, like medicine. And I realize as I'm saying those words, I'm sure it's an incredibly difficult thing to unravel, but it might help with some of the panic. It's the delivery that wasn't... I'm sorry, here. So I just wanted to put the word out there that there's so many lovely people who are willing to help. And if there's a clear way to know how to do that, thinking outside the box or inside the box, I'm one of those people who still know how to do it.
Karen?
Karen Pierre-Hay Beach. I just want to say that, and everybody should know this, the Soloviev Corporation are developers. They have been major developers in New York City through the past sixty years. I had some interactions with Sheldon Solo, with my late husband, like forty years ago. These are major people that just like to develop things. So thinking ahead, I would encourage someone on the board to look in to see what that property is zoned for. My guess is at some point, they're going to tear it down if they retain ownership and try to build something, you know, Ritz-Carlton-type cafe or something. So I think it's really important to see what the zoning is for that lot or that piece of property and what and how many variances they would need to tear it down and build something, you know, very elaborate. Just think ahead. Is there already thinking?
Thank you.
Anyone else in the physical audience?
Can I say something?
Sure.
You know, this is really a very critical thing for the community. I really did not find out about this other than a phone call on a Sunday afternoon at four o'clock. Okay? I think one of the solutions are, you know, and this week has been filled with all kinds of town hall meetings, okay? So I reached out to a whole group of people, our state legislature, New York State Legislature, okay? And a whole lot of political people, let them know that we have this issue here. This morning, ironic as it was, I had some heating issues with my house, and a man came to do some repair work, and he told a story about himself, okay, where he takes five medicines, okay? And he said, I heard about this. And the man was really shook up with his family, okay, of what is he going to do? I think what I'm thinking about is that... I think that the board, we should try to spend more time together to break up some of these things so we're not tripping over each other. I'm not calling because I don't know what you're doing. I don't know what Meg is doing. So I think it would be good for us as a board to really sit down and really... Let's see what we've all come up with, okay? And how we can move forward. Maybe there's some other things that we all can do because this is not... This is certainly... This is a time to... That's when we bring our community together. And as Molly just said, you know, she... There are a lot of people who really want to help and participate. So I think that I just would encourage us to really sit down and talk more about what the solutions are. And, you know, Ben has an idea, but I think we really need to sit down and take it serious. But the whole board has been tied up with things, and we haven't had a lot of time. But it's really not a good way to find out about something. And, you know, my immediate reaction, and I didn't do this because I don't want to trip over anybody, but I think they have an obligation. They came to our community. They were going to do this. I think they should really be... We should... They should be... There should be some representative coming to this community. They've created this, you know... It's... Listen, it's America. It's capitalism. It's all these things. But the way they went about this short notice, okay, is really not acceptable, okay? And I agree with you, Meg. We shouldn't hold those employees responsible. But at the same time, you know, just listening to a few folks here, we have to be careful about people coming to our island, okay? But just, I don't want to get into that conversation. I want to just really address the Soloviev family. I mean, I really think we should put pressure on them to really come and talk to us about... That's the least they can do. And if they don't want to talk in an open forum, at least talk to us on an individual basis in an executive session so we can get a handle of what that is. But I'd be glad to help in any way, okay? And those are the kind of things that I'm good at, okay? So if you want to use some of my skill set, this is the time, okay? But I'd like to talk to you after this meeting about the people I've spoken to so that we're not tripping all over each other. So that's my statement. And I'm really concerned because, you know, obviously, we know we have the oldest population in New York State as a toll, okay? And I think there's a way for us to not panic over it, but we have to act, okay? And I think you're doing a good job moving forward, and I think it's really important, okay?
I have a question, Thomas. Can we... Is this a topic that we can take to an executive session? I mean, I put it on the agenda, and I put it first so that we would get all of the information that, you know, I've been working on. Meg's been working on. Kelly's been with me, so if she had anything to add. Benjamin did mention yesterday about his... Is this an executive session, or should we continue this conversation? Gordon can share what he, you know, his talks to the legislature and things like that.
Executive session, you talk about like contract negotiations. You talk about, you know, legal issues from counsel, internal employee issues. Those are the types of things. I don't... Off the top of my head, I don't see it as an executive session topic.
That makes it hard because certainly some of the things people have told me were told to be in confidence.
Yeah.
Well, then what I would suggest is come and talk to me individually so we don't break form and let me know what, you know... Like, I haven't reached out because I didn't know if there was... I've been trying to deal with what can we do to solve an immediate issue.
This is really kind of like, this is a different... This is really a crisis. It's a one-subject matter, okay? And it's not... Is anything... It's important. Could you maybe look a little deeper into it?
Yeah, I mean, while we're sitting here, I'll go through it. But yeah, that's just off the top.
And the other approach is that we kind of do need legal advice around some of these ideas. So it almost fits into a legal session.
Some of it may even involve contractual stuff, okay? And people don't want to be, you know... So it's hard to really discuss it like this, okay?
Yeah, but that's what I'm suggesting. Until Thomas comes up with an answer so that we're not violating open meetings law, then come and talk to me. I've been the point person on trying to reach out and having the conversations. And I've had the tough conversations with the Soloviev group. Like, if you're in the hospitality business, why on earth did you ever buy a pharmacy? Like, I just couldn't help myself. I was getting so frustrated, so.
I think that Karen brings up a very good comment about, you know, development, coming to the island. We've had a lot of promises, and people are doing these things. And we just have to... I think it's a bell-ringing time to be alert of what we're coming to. The intentions are one thing, but what happens later on sometimes turns into a different thing. And we certainly don't need any more empty stores in this town.
Well, we need to continue to tighten up our site plan review. I know that's under review in a subcommittee, so we need to get that taken care of. You know, same with the wetlands code, get that taken care of. So there are things that we can do to tighten things up, but when one business sells to another, we're not... We usually find out about it after the fact because there's no mechanism for the town to step in unless you have an idea on how we can insert ourselves in this process.
Sorry to interrupt you, but Public Officer's Law, Section 105, Conduct of Executive Sessions. Matters which will peril the public's safety if disclosed. Any matter which may disclose the identity of a law enforcement agent or performer. Any information relating to a future, current or future investigation or prosecution of a criminal offense. Discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation. Collecting negotiations like civil service. Medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation. Matters leading to the, so really internal employee discussions. Preparation examining, creating and administration of examinations and then proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property. So those are the grounds. I don't, you know, I don't see anything specific to this, but. So anyway, you go ahead.
Okay. You had a comment?
Yes. Jason Terran. I guess to start with just the vacant, vacant lots and whatnot. Are there any laws that preclude that? I know at one point in New York City during the pandemic, it talked about disallowing vacant buildings because landlords would get a write-off, become rate of the rent. And we're taking advantage and just destroying communities by leaving things empty to profit themselves. Is there some law on the books or can law be added to the books in regards to that here on the island where?
Periodically we've floated the idea of a vacancy tax. I don't know if I've added that to your list yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tax deducts that you're talking about are state and federal.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Local municipality.
Yeah, but I have like seen in other states, something about vacancy tax when I tried to research it, especially Association of Town Meetings to see if any other towns within New York State have instituted something. And this happened, I recall, like just before the pandemic hit and then we didn't have Association of Towns for a couple of years. There were other towns reaching out to me like, oh, if you find anything out, please let me know. Like we're in a similar situation. So there is a need for it. So it just, it got dropped during the pandemic and then recently started to think about it. But there's always other priorities, like figuring out what to do about the pharmacy this week.
For sure, for sure. Well, that, that could be helpful for us.
Yeah. So Thomas is now adding it to his list.
Awesome. And then it is a, an essential business, as you mentioned, for the island's health. Certainly, I moved here, I'm a pandemic refugee from Brooklyn. So I moved here five years ago, now back and forth, but like my family's been out here for a long time. And it seems like it will damage the whole island, the economy of the island, the accessibility to people who live here to use it and even property values could be damaged. So I do think that it's, I don't know, did, did they name a price for a lease or purchase?
No, I'm supposed to get another phone call back later today after discussions with the.
It seems like for the health of the island and the value of all the properties combined, it is an important thing to keep running. So it would make sense to build a coalition that could maybe help keep it open. I think those were. And then I guess the last bit is just if there's any legal assistance that could be, that could be helpful. My wife is in the legal industry and has a lot of access to all sorts of different levels of lawyers, law firms, et cetera, et cetera, and might be able to help us zone in like efficiently, cost efficiently, to different types of lawyer access. So if that's helpful, happy to leave information on how to contact us.
That would be good. Yeah, if you can give that to Christina.
Sure. Okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just my priority, since, you know, I heard about this on Saturday, just before I was headed off to a wedding. My priority since hearing about this is figuring out how to deal with the, you know, making sure people have access to their medications in this short period of time. Knowing that the longer term fix of trying to replace a pharmacy on Shelter Island is going to take months, if not a year, if we can, you know, expedite that. So that has been how I've been prioritizing my contacts and communications and things like that. But I, this is why I wanted to have people come in and give me, you know, their feedback so that I can keep moving forward on all fronts. Anyone else in the physical audience who wishes to speak? Anyone else? Oh.
I just want to let, um.
Let people know who you are.
Should we go up here?
It's up to you.
All right. I'll stay here. Um, Kelly, I'm sure this is such a manager for Shelter Island Town. Just wanted to just touch on what you just said. I know that seniors and everyone else, you need your medication. And since this is, we have such a short term time, it's really sad that it's only till the seventh. But I think everyone should start thinking, you're throwing medication that you take every day. Maybe think about doing express scripts or some type of mail away. I know that you don't think so, there's a problem with the mail, but I feel like at least get that going just in case these other things fall through. And we're happy to help the senior center. And I reached out to the social worker, the town social worker, Alla. She's going to help us as well. So if anyone needs any help with technology, if we need to go to their homes, we're, we're then happy to do that. And we're going to be here for our senior community to help them get through this tough time.
Thank you.
In the Zoom audience, Pam, I see your, you have your hand up. You're muted.
I know I'm muted. I'm trying to do two things at once. I, I, I just did a search on this about any kind of state laws that might be affecting this kind of situation as far as blocking the closing of pharmacies. And according to my quick search, it does say in fact that under Article 45A of the Public Health Law, it requires healthcare entities, including pharmacies, to provide written notice to the New York State Department of Health at least 30 days before the transaction's closing. And I wonder if that's been done or we can look into that to see, because I, I'm surprised that the, if that notice was sent to the Department of Health, that the Department of Health would not have contacted the town. So again, Article 45A of the Public Health Law.
Can you read that again? Because you seem to be talking about closing as in a purchase.
Yes, it's closing because what I searched for was state protection to block pharmacy closing in New York.
So. That kind of refers to the acquisition, the purchase of a pharmacy, not the shutting down of a pharmacy.
We can hear Thomas is on it.
It says it requires pharmacies, it says it requires pharmacies to inform customers of a permanent closing and to provide assistance with transferring their prescriptions. So I, I just, I just wanted to look into it because it seems like it's really short notice for people who are on multiple medications to be able to make some kind of adjustment in the next two weeks.
So we're going to have our.
Just trying to help out on this. I don't know.
Oh, thank you, Pam. We're going to have our actual practicing attorney look into this rather than me.
Yes.
Good enough.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Anyone else in Zoom?
One more thought. When you talked with the Solviaf Group about.
Come just a little closer so we get picked up on the mic.
Cost of lease purchase. Anyone who's interested in making that transaction is going to want to see the losses and so maybe some sort of.
Yes. Yeah, that request, I had a real estate agent who may have somebody who's interested, who reached out this earlier today to ask that very same question. Yeah. Anyone else on Zoom? And then Gordon, was there anything that you did want to share about your, the reach outs that you made or?
No, I'm just, we're playing some telephone tag here, but I've only spoken to somebody and we're supposed to be at a meeting here till four o'clock. So I hope, hopefully this afternoon, but I, I have nothing concrete, but all I'm saying is that we, we need to work together. That's all.
Our door is open. All right. That's that agenda item. Thank you all who came. And we'll have something up on the website later this afternoon. Some of this information and, you know, it's much information and updates as we can. And we will put them on, we do have the town Facebook page. We also have Instagram and we'll, we'll keep getting it out there. So thank you, everyone. Kelly, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, so Benjamin, before the meeting started, he needs to leave by three o'clock for, you know.
Yes.
Sorry to hear that. So what I want to do is maybe rejigger the agenda for a minute. Jeffy, I, I guess, well, we'll get to that later because that's, that's not on fire at the moment. I guess.
Should we do the things that are going to.
That's what I was just about to say. We have a special meeting on the Chamberlain Outdoor Assembly Permit and including the 5K banner. So I wanted to switch down to item number four. So I was just starting to say, we'll push Jeffy off the list.
Item number four.
Okay, so Sylvester Manor is having a fall concert. It is going to be on Fresh Year.
Thank you. See you in the long term.
Yes, the date is October 11th from 2:00 to 4:30 PM. They are requesting a noise exemption. Which is why they are before us.
So what's it on?
2:00 to 4:30 PM.
And it's to benefit the Manor and the Shelter Island Volunteer Fire Department. So they're going to split the place with the fire department, it seems like.
It looks like it's happening down at the creek.
Yes.
And there's no tent involved. We'll suck it there yet.
Yeah, just a stage, it looks like. Do they have a rain date? No. Did we hear anything from PD or? I wouldn't need to be. So I don't think.
Yeah, I commented supervisor, there were no issues.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, and Ken is on as well. Is there anything from you, Ken?
I'm mute. Uh, no, I had no issues with it either.
My only reminder is SLA. If they're serving alcohol, that they make sure that they have the proper SLA approvals. Usually the vendor comes with that.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the only, it's a family event, featuring a food truck, fun activities and a 50/50 raffle. But you can just check in with them, Amber. Okay. You can say if the Shelter Island Craft Brewery.
That's one of the vendors. Okay. Otherwise it's during the day. It's on their property. They don't need any services.
Yeah, they wouldn't need this example, the noise exemption.
Right.
Oh, there it is in fire. Okay. All right. So we are going to have a special meeting at the end to, no, not for this one, because there is time. Never mind, October 11th. The next one, Chamberlain wants to have an outdoor movie.
Board meeting before the 11th?
October 11th?
Yeah, it's October 40th. Right. So then we should pass the resolution for this today.
Good catch. We don't have another board meeting before that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, yeah, rather than have multiple specials.
Specials, that's, yeah.
We know if you don't like special meetings, you can avoid that.
Why do they need, why do they need a permit for this?
Noise exemption.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise they wouldn't.
Yeah, else you say it's up their house. It's a perfect.
Yeah.
So it's at Crescent Beach.
No, no, he's talking about Sylvester Manor. So. Right, you're talking still about.
Well, no, this.
Oh.
Chamberlain, that's at Crescent Beach.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Yeah. They want to do a birthday celebration on the beach with an outdoor movie screening and self catered food.
They definitely need a permit.
No generator. It's all self-contained, battery-powered equipment. October 3rd, which is.
This weekend, Saturday?
Yes. Yes. From April 5th to 10th, clean up and set up and everything.
With a rain date of the 10th, October 10th.
Oh, I didn't.
They, they, they didn't submit a map that showed.
I spoke with her. She's on a train right now. They're just going to set up food if available under the pavilion. If not, she's going to bring little tables on the side and then just go from there. I asked if Ken's concern was having a fire. They brought, they're bringing or requesting to one of those little portable fire pits. Everything's off the sand, carry weight, take it away. And that's it.
What about the movie screen?
It's a blow up, battery operated. No generator, no noise, no lights, besides obviously the screen.
So they're going to be down towards the pavilion. Okay.
Tables, if there's other picnic tables available, that's where they're going to.
I think historically, outside of the high season, we haven't.
Yeah, outside of Memorial Day to Labor Day season, we do allow events like this.
It's a Friday evening?
Yeah, it's Friday. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. It's, it's one of those events where it's, it's after the summer season. There's no parking permits required because it's after the 15th of September. Yeah, I don't have any.
Season's pretty close.
Yep. Yeah, Ken and Chief had no problems. Other than pick up. We had to trash. So, yeah.
So that will be done in special meeting. The next one is the 5K Run Rock and they are in the process of filling out the Outdoor Assembly Permit, but they are requesting to be able to install a banner.
For plus cancer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And the banner is going to be placed across 114 by the Presbyterian Church.
That's the same place they usually do the one for the craft?
Yes.
That's.
The sink, yeah. What is this banner? Was it saying that?
Just.
Does it say folk for bag?
No, it's a Shelter on 5K. Yeah. Yeah, the Shelter on 5K is run. We let them put one up that said that.
Sure.
Don't go for that crazy person.
They're campaigning at table, or not campaigning. All right. So I don't have a problem with this.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
So make a note so we don't forget the.
We have time.
Never mind, I was thinking. For the 10, uh, 5K one?
Well, no, I was just thinking, should we just skip into the special meeting and get it done so that we can do it before Ben has to go? But we have time.
We have time.
Because I'm not finished with the seat. There you go. That was my other thought in the back of my head, but.
Yeah.
Three more minutes.
Yeah, no, we're, you're good. We, you have time.
Did I miss? And that, did we get updated drawings from Jeffy?
You discussed it a week ago in work session.
Yeah.
And you, you ended up with a two-two split. And so the question was, there was a resolution that was.
He provided the drawing of the pool section, elevation, I believe.
Yes, everything was submitted.
Yeah, we got it. We have everything.
Yeah. Yeah, we have all the, all the drawings. This was really just to go over with Amber, our discussion at the last work session about this application so we could write the resolution.
It printed the resolution. We can go back and find it.
There weren't, you know, it was essentially based off of the latest version we got, which had the trench drain. It had the vegetated buffer with the fence moved to the landward side of the vegetated buffer. It included the silt fencing.
Dry wells.
Rules, the dry wells, all that. So it's just a resolution to essentially accept the latest version with all the accommodations that we passed forward.
And with the little piece of the pool and the deck that's.
Yes.
In the 100-foot buffer.
Right.
That's why they're talking to us.
Right. Yes. And so we didn't put it on for Monday night because there was a consensus in the board to move forward with it. We put it on for resolution.
I think that could have been at least another hour.
Well, this would have been just.
Yeah, this would have just been a resolution in work, you know, work session part, you know, meeting part.
Sorry, it's a little punchy from last time.
I woke up with the same headache I went to bed with.
Yeah, so, no, I, you know, I have not finished watching the entire work session. Yeah, so, no, I, you know, I have not finished watching the entire work session because I keep getting interrupted. But I had reviewed the resolution when I wasn't sure if it was going to be on for last night. And so I, we can write it in the affirmative. So that was gonna be my instructions to you, write it in the affirmative. The passage, the connection. So that was Jeffy. Community Development Block Grant was on here, I meant to take it off. After last night's public hearing.
I thought we had a resolution due.
No, we just had the public hearing last week.
Okay.
So the public, the only thing that was mentioned was, you know, some sort of ADA access. So that will not come to us as a town board. It's going to go back to capital planning and grants. I know Ken had some ideas and was going to look into, you know, possible pricing, I think maybe along with Joe, for handicap access at Allegiant Hall, the community center. So it won't come back to the town board until after capital planning looks at it. So my apologies, we're putting that on there. Okay, waterways application, Fagan Dock. This is where, you know, just putting it on because we had discussed it last night. I did not realize that Albert was not going to be here. And I feel like with the public hearing closed, that he would want to have a voice in the conversation. So I'm thinking that we push this to a work session where he will be present. It also will just give me time to like re-review everything outside of the noise of what's, you know, like all of the stuff that we had going on last night, the pharmacy and all that. So if everyone is in agreement, we'll put it to the next work session. So it won't be next week, it'll be the week following.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I think it's a real issue.
It'll be when?
In two weeks, we didn't have a work session.
No.
Because of digest people.
Right. Yeah, but we've had it, our next meeting is on the 20th. For 62 days, okay.
Well, what's the open issue really? This is not the issue really just-
We, well, we had, we had all the, we had Teresa Mason's input, we had a lot of input there. Yeah, I think the real issue is the, quite honestly, is that it's a kayak and it's extremely long.
Yeah, I think the only real issue that I, that's in my head, and other people might different issues, is the length of the dock. Because it's given its use, does it really need to be 90 feet long to get out in two and a half feet of water?
Right, right.
Well, the other issue seemed resolved between Teresa Mason's letter about lighting and-
I had Amber pull a prior application, I think is really a good model for when we have kayaks, okay, in shallow water, okay? And I'd like to disseminate this maybe if we can, we're not gonna-
Yeah, we'll continue the topic.
Because I think this is a very good model because it's basically, it's a shorter dock, it's a narrower dock. It basically is something that we've already approved, okay, for someone else, okay? And it's non-motorized, so it, I think it's a good model that even WMAC should be working with. So I will share this with everyone and we can talk about it, and then I'll leave a date.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. You'll give that to Christina to give to us? Gordon, you'll give that to Christina?
Yes.
To support, okay, thanks. You're, did you circle it?
No, I'm, I will.
Board member reports before we do the special.
I'd like to start, could I?
Sure.
I wanna, I like to, I wrote this down, okay, but it, like, about last night, okay? I just want to clarify my comment that I made last night about team, okay? Obviously, the team that I'm referring to, I just want to be clear, is the community and the residents who are deeply concerned about the use of our natural resources. Water is a precious commodity on the island and we need to be careful with its use. The community that works to protect our natural resources, that's the team that I'm talking about, okay? So I just want to clarify the, and I apologize to Ben being outspoken, okay? But I, I, that was the team that I was referring to, okay?
Well, no apology necessary, I understood what team you're talking about. And, you know, sometimes we'll disagree on stuff. It's okay.
So you think Benjamin's part of the team, but we're not part of the team? I'm feeling a little excluded here.
Saying that, basically, what am I always concerned about? I'm concerned about our environment, our water usage, okay? And sometimes we get heated over it, okay? And I just want to clarify, when I talk about, I'm talking about, this is a big issue with water here, okay? And I think we gotta take it serious, and I do take it serious. And I want to make sure I'm representing the community and making sure our natural resources are preserved. That's all, that's my goal, okay?
No, I'm just-
I just, you know, going a little bit further, I think, I sort of blame myself because when I look at, this is like the second time this happened with these long meetings, okay? We really, it, it's really not good, okay? And I think that we have to work harder, that we don't have these marathons. And because I don't think it's, I don't, I don't, it's, it's too long, the attention spans and it's hard to, it's, it's hard, it's a marathon, okay? And I don't think it's fair to the people who sit here for hours as they don't know how long this is gonna be. But I think we, it's why I, I consider myself responsible for it because I had the ability of standing up and changing or putting some feedback onto it.
Yeah, well, it's why I was pushing so hard to, I mean, we've had, you know, so many public hearings on Gardner State Country Club, on Grady Riley. It's why I was pushing so hard for us to come to a conclusion on whatever was any missing documentation, missing information that we needed. Because that has been adding to these long meetings. So I think now that we've cleared those two off of the public hearing dockets, it will start to settle down because Amber does take care to look at the schedule to see, okay, what do we have? When I'm, when she's scheduling the public hearings, what can I put on for this next coming meeting? What should get bumped to the next meeting? And when we have adjournment after adjournment, it messes with the schedule because we try not to have so many on one calendar. So hopefully-
I'm not implying that this is something that belongs to you, I'm just saying, to you, Amber, I'm just saying to you that, you know, when you watch some of the other boards, the zoning board, when they get to a particular point, you say, listen, we're gonna have to adjourn this because there's too much on their agenda, so I think we have to do those same kind of things.
Yeah, it's just a little hard because when somebody has had, you know, they've got paid people, you know, paid consultants and professionals and that, you know, like not to give them at least a little bit like we did with the last one last night to be able to like have their say.
It's also helpful if the board has thoroughly reviewed the documents before the hearing so that our questions are prepared and any gaps that we see in the record, we can request at the time of the first hearing. It helps everything go smoothly. So some of it's on us to make sure that we're prepared adequately for the meetings. Just throwing that out there.
Also, you know, a lot of it last night, there's a lot of repeat conversations that went on for, you know, what, they just went on and on and on. I mean, maybe that's where the three-minute rule needs to come back, okay?
Yeah, when we had the three-minute rule though, people did not feel heard. So, you know, it's the norm.
Medium.
And it also keeps the tenor, you know, the temperature of the meeting down by letting people have, you know, be able to speak. And other communities do have the three-minute rule, but we're constantly told Shelter Island is different, so.
Even with the five-minute rule, it's gonna get shorter.
I can be outvoted on that one if you all say, let's implement it. I just, I feel like the public should be-
And the only other thing that I want to put on for next week, okay? On the, the access points of the island, which we've talked about, the landings and access points, okay? I want to make sure we have, I spoke with Thomas about this, so next week, I want to bring up, have this, that ready for a resolution that includes the addition of the Middle Harbey Road, yes.
Where you're trying to add it to?
What, we never adopted that piece, okay? So I want to include, make that a adjustment to that, and then we adopt it.
Okay, all right, and so you're working on that, Thomas?
Yes, I think I'll have something that circulates you on Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, to be on work session next week.
Okay.
And the general theme is to add Middle Harbey Road now?
Well, yes.
And then pass the old document and with that new addition.
Yeah, well, the idea is that chapter, the recommendations were to add definitions to chapter 36 for town dock, town beach, town landing. And so you can't add Middle Harbey, you can't add any of them until the definition exists in the code. So to create that section of, you know, that definition section so that then you can add whichever ones you want.
Can we do it, is it the same stroke or one stroke and then the second stroke? Just so we don't have to-
Well, we use, I mean, doing the local law is kind of the bigger step, obviously, yeah.
Then we have to publish it, don't we?
Yeah, we have to- We have to set the public hearing.
Never mind.
It's not, it's not happening tomorrow. It's gonna require a public hearing and notice everything.
It's a process, but we're starting to have.
It's telling me inactive government, it's news.
Shocking, right?
That's what I have.
Okay, yeah, going back to see last week. Yeah, actually, I did not have, oh, no, West Neck Water District. Yeah, for West Neck Water District. The notes inside. They're proceeding and adding the two new properties into the district. Trying to move forward on that. Oh, the, one of the good news items was Lisa Shaw and I have been working with Suffolk County Water Authority on their billings for the past two years to the district. We have the, you know, the debt service basically that we're covering with the increased rates that are charged to West Neck Water Districts over and above the Suffolk County Water Authority rates. And so when Lisa and I reviewed the details of those billings, there were some corrections that needed to be made. Those were flowed through, and so when we got the billing for 2024 corrected and then 2025 layered on top of it, the, we have money in reserves for West Neck Water that the original plan was to offset the rate increase that's needed to cover the debt service. And we anticipated taking $25,000 a year out of that reserve to keep the rates lower. They had, you know, basically when Suffolk County Water Authority came in, we had to double the rates. Then the grant that Fred Field got for us for $500,000 took that debt service down from 1.7 million to 1.2 million. With the bill that we just got with the corrections made for two years, we only need to send Suffolk County Water Authority a check for $1,500. And so that was good, preserving the reserves that we have. So at the next meeting, I believe it'll be in December, I'm going to update the amortization schedule that I had. I had plugged in some assumptions about rate increases for Suffolk County Water Authority to give to that board to say, what do you want to do? Originally, we thought we were going to run out of that reserve that was going to allow for no increases in West Neck Water rate, you know, for those users until a certain date. So now that date will get pushed out. Once those reserves are used up, then of course the rates would have to be increased. So we're just, I'm gonna pull something together along with Lisa and then present that to that board who will then in turn come to the town board with their recommendation on what they want to do with West Neck Water rates for us to approve. So, but the good news was, is we aren't hitting that reserve as much as we thought we would, so.
Amber, was I able to listen to our meeting, okay? The, it was an issue over applications, whether they were going directly to Suffolk County or going to the West Neck Water District. Had that been resolved? At the previous meeting, they, they were said, okay, you know, we have new meetings and it was this discussion of who does it go to? And at that meeting, it was said, you know, well, why not just go to Suffolk County Water? I'm assuming it's going through West Neck Water first before it goes to Suffolk County Water.
I'm not sure, I was a few minutes late because I had another meeting, so I was a little bit late. And then I had something, I had to leave early, so I'm not 100% sure because I was trying to deal with a couple of things. So we can look into that, yeah. Yeah, there was a little bit of a discussion about what is the role of the West Neck Water Board. So that would be one of the things, as well as setting rates and also being a liaison. Yeah, yeah. That's all right.
Yeah, actually, didn't have a lot last week. It was pretty much a CBA meeting and then budget. So I actually don't really have anything to report.
No, love it, do it.
All right, and we will close the work session and go into a special meeting. Were you able to pull that resolution together?
I have.
Oh, you got it, okay. You had something to sign?
Yeah. One day.
Erase it, the pen probably isn't long.
All my pens are erasing.
All right, so you've got-
You're the first one and the-
Oh, do you need a pen?
Yeah.
So you can kick us off, Meg?
All right, whereas Stephen Searle on behalf of Sylvester Manor, 81 Cherry Road, has submitted an outdoor assembly application for permission to hold a fall concert on October 11th, 2025, from 2:00 to 4:30 PM. And whereas the app, Ken has requested a noise ordinance, whereas the required documents and fees have been submitted, now therefore be it resolved, that said request is hereby approved.
So move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. One of say, one of-
Extension, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
That's voluntary, okay.
So it's three, motion carried. Whereas Gabriel Chamberlain, 4 Margaret's Drive, has submitted an outdoor assembly application for permission to hold a birthday celebration on October 3rd, 2025, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Crescent Beach. And whereas the required documents and fees have been submitted and all garbage must be collected and placed in the property receptacles, now therefore be it resolved, said request is hereby approved. So move.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I mean, to like, oh, you got it.
Yeah. Whereas Maria Ellen Etapietro, on behalf of Shelter Island Run/5K, has requested approval to place a banner across Route 114 advertising the event. And whereas the town board has reviewed and considered that that said request, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby approves the said request. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, make a motion to close the special meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.